I don't have to tell you things are bad. Everybody knows things are bad. Everybody's out of work or scared of losing their job. The dollar buys a nickel's worth. Banks are going bust. Shopkeepers keep a gun under the counter. Punks are running wild in the street and there's nobody anywhere seems to know what to do and there's no end to it. The air is unfit to breathe and our food is unfit to eat. We sit watching our TVs while some local news caster tells us that today we had 15 homicides and 63 violent crimes, as if that's the way it's supposed to be. We know things are bad, worse than bad. It's like everything everywhere is going crazy, so we don't go out anymore. We sit in the house and slowly the world we're living in is getting smaller and all we say is please at least leave us alone in our living rooms. Let me have my toaster and my TV and my steel belted radios and I won't say anything. Just leave us alone. Well, I'm not going to leave you alone. I want you to get mad. I don't want you to protest. I don't want you to riot. I don't want you to write to your congressman because I wouldn't know what to tell you to write. I don't know what to do about the depression and the inflation and the Russians and the crime in the street. All I know is that first you've got to get mad. You've got to say, I'm a human being. God damn it. My life has value. So I want you to get up now. I want all of you to get up out of your chairs. I want you to get up right now and go to the window, open it and stick your head out and yell, I'm as mad as hell and I'm not going to take this anymore.
Well, hello there ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this 224th episode of the political spotlight. I am your host, Christopher H. Bilbury. Man, I'm telling you what, that meeting just got over. I was like, had one foot out the door. And I'm telling you, if the police would have found me between city hall and the studio, I would have absolutely been arrested for reckless driving. I was driving at least 90 miles an hour through town. And as soon as I hit, uh, as soon as I hit Broadway, I was like about 180 all the way from there to 67. Uh, I flew home. I mean, the meeting just got out and the speed with which I was able to get here, ladies and gentlemen, uh, it was amazing. No, uh, hey, I'm completely lying to you. Um, I ladies and gentlemen, uh, was not at that meeting. Uh, thank the Lord above. Thank the Lord that I did not attend that meeting. I would have been going out of my skull. Here's the thing that really bothers me. When, when I'm preparing the, the lives in what we call the duck at Streamyard, which is the studio, it's the system with which sends all of our live videos uh, out to YouTube and X and to Facebook and whatnot, not to get too, too technical on you. But when I'm preparing that, you, you have to say like, I'm making, uh, this, this video that we're going to go live. You know, on July 26th at 9:00 PM, 9:15 PM, 9:30, whenever you put it, it's in there and it's okay. People will get on and whatever. Here, here's the duck. I don't even know how you got that big ass picture of the duck. How did you get that? What in the hell? Where did you get that from? That was amazing. Uh, so that was crazy. I've never ever, 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 ever even remotely seen that big ass picture of the duck. What in the hell? That's amazing. You got that like on, on demand anyways. Um, so when you do that, it like you, you put in what time you're going to go live and it, there's nothing, there's nothing like pushing you. If I set that a live is going to go at 9:00 PM and I don't go until 9:15 or 9:30, it doesn't do anything to me. But it's just having this thing in the back of my mind and I don't like for things to be out of, out of whack. I don't like things to be, you know, not how they're supposed to be. And I knew going into tonight that tonight was going to be a long ass meeting. I knew that. Wait a minute. One day as I came home early from work, I saw a guy jogging naked. I said to the guy, hey buddy, why are you doing that for? He said, because you came home early. That's hilarious. Uh, good. So, uh, but I, I knew that, I knew that the meeting was going to be a disaster. Uh, and I actually thought that we were going to see some fireworks out of that meeting that we didn't really see. We'll, we'll get to that here in a minute. Welcome ladies and gentlemen. This is the political spotlight. I am your host, Christopher H. Bilbury. Uh, tonight in this, in this very late episode, uh, forgive me, forgive, forgive me, uh, on behalf of the Muncie City Council and the citizens that wanted to be heard. Those silly bastards. That's not what council meetings are for. Uh, so no, uh, it was just a meeting. It was the November meeting. I, I don't understand why in years past, like before 2020, they would generally normally move the November meeting if it fell the night before election day. I don't know why they've not been doing that for the last several years. But, uh, in case they forgot, ladies and gentlemen, I, you know what? It almost makes me sad to see that. I just realized as soon as I, I've been counting down for this. And this is the first time like Christmas, I realize it's almost over. One way or another, it is almost over. One more. Technically, that's not even true. Technically, that's not even true. Technically today was day one. Technically, I mean, like technically like it's, it's the day it's here. It's election day. When we wake up tomorrow morning, it will be election day. Uh, that's amazing. Yeah. Dishman fell asleep. It had to be woken up. Yeah. Oh God. So here's what we're going to do folks, because I know it's late. Hello there. Hello, 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 hello everyone. I know it's late and, uh, we're not going to do a real long show. Um, I thank God I'm feeling better. Um, I woke up this morning and, uh, was out of the, uh, rumblings in my tumblies. Didn't have that going on anymore. Thank God. Um, so, uh, had a couple of you reach out to me and, uh, send me, uh, various, uh, home remedies to get over, uh, my ailment and I want to thank each and every one of you for doing that. Uh, I marked a couple of them down. I'm actually going to try a couple of them. Uh, but thank God this morning when I woke up, I was much better. Uh, so we hope that that remains. We hope that I'm on the, on the mend and, and everything will be good. Uh, and if tomorrow wasn't going to absolutely be just the end all be all crazy, at four o'clock, my grandfather goes in for surgery. Actually literally is going to be put under the knife. He's going to go under. I was like, are we sure? We can't kick this over till Wednesday? So, um, that's not going to affect us. We're going to do what we gotta do. Everything's going to be good. Be cool. We're going to be good. Everything's going to be well. No issues going to be happening. We're going to be fantastic. All is going to be well. So here's the deal. If you could, because I'm having a day of all days and tomorrow's going to be the tomorrow of all tomorrows. Tomorrow's going to be a busy day. If you could, just do me a favor and like, like the show. Like this episode. If you haven't subscribed, subscribe. If you haven't shared the show with people that you know, that you think need to hear this, then please do that. Um, and listen folks, you're going to want to connect with us. Tomorrow, if you have not clicked that bell, you're going to want to ring my bell. Uh, I just start, just about started singing it to you. Uh, you're definitely going to want to click through and do what you've got to do. Obviously we're on YouTube. This is the YouTube link. Very easy. Remember it. It's right there. You can see it. You can see it. You can see it. I said it three times. It's time to go onto the next one. Here's rumble. There's our rumble. There's our rumble. There's our rumble. Uh, you got it three times going on to the next. Yeah. Don't start singing. Uh, here is X, uh, formerly known as Tik Tok. Tik Tok. No, no, excuse me. Uh, Twitter. Damn it. I'm getting all confused. Formerly known as Twitter, Twitter, Twitter. That is X.com. Uh, tweet, tweet, tweet. There that is. Uh, here is my personal Facebook page, which is where I do the majority of my social media, mediaing from. Uh, then we also have the political spotlight page, which is the, that's the only thing that the does not, is not on. It's just political spotlight 318. Uh, don't ask. It's a long story. Uh, but then also the big, the big thing is the big thing tomorrow is going to be YouTube, X and Tik Tok. Tik Tok, X and YouTube. If you can find me on those three things, you will be up to date. Now I do want to put this out there right now for you. This is really important. This is a scan me QR code. If you scan this, do the little QR code thingy, put your phone up to it and scan it. It will take you to our YouTube page that looks like this. No, scan, see if you can scan that one. Kate, scan that one. Just all you're going to do is take a picture of it. Put your phone up and act like you're going to take a picture and it should pop up. Did it do it? Mine does it. I'm going to do it here real quick. Yep. Mine already did it just soon as I picked up. I just pulled it up there and a thing comes up. Yep. There you go. That's absolutely ladies and gentlemen, that's the way. Holy shit. We figured it out. Another way to connect you to us, to us, to you through these stupid QR codes. It's almost like we just are, are accepting in the mark of the beast. I don't like it. It freaks me out. I don't like that shit. The very first time I ever saw one of those things, I do not like it. I just do not like it. Let me tell you ladies and, yeah, a link will pop up. That's exactly right. And you'll go to it and it will take you to a YouTube page. And then this is what you're going to see. The 2024 general election results show. The political spotlight, Bilbury, Rudd, Thornburg, live Sunday through Thursday at 9:00 PM Eastern. Except tomorrow, we're going to be live. Tune in starting at 7:00 PM Eastern. For live up to the minute coverage on all of your local state and national, local state and national general election results. You want to know, uh, how Kamala Harris is doing in Utah? You turn it to our, our beautiful mugs. You want to know what's going on in Georgia? Turn into my, turn, tune it into my fat ass and I will tell you what's going on in Massachusetts or wherever else I said. You will want to be here. It's going to be great. We're going to have, uh, where it's going to be me and Brandon and Kate. Uh, like you've never seen us before, just kind of coming and going and doing and living and laughing. And people are going to be stopping in and seeing us and I don't know what's going to happen. Uh, it'll be interesting. It's not going to be like a regular show. Okay? Um, so we're not going to be like, it's going to be necessarily like the whole show of me sitting here addressing you. There might be long periods of time where we're just not even saying anything and I'm looking off like this and looking stuff up. And, and maybe even falling asleep because it's going to be a long day, but we're, no, I'm not going to be falling asleep. We're going to get you the up to the date moment, uh, by moment, by minute, by hour, uh, details of who is winning the elections all over. And, uh, if you want to know who's winning in, in Utah, or you have, uh, you want to know what's going on, get ahold of us. We're going to have people, uh, on the ground in local and watching all of the, uh, big news, news outlets and Kate's here for something.
Well, just to show you, this is what pops up and it shows you live in 20 hours. So.
Hours.
The QR code.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That's what it'll look like on my phone. So.
That's really cool. I also, Kate said something weird last night. So Kate has.
Lots of weird stuff.
Yeah, right.
Well, particular weird thing.
Also Kate has a, a personal phone and then she has a work phone for her other, her other job. And she called me, she either called me on it or I called her. And when, when that happened, it, it didn't say Christopher Bilbury anymore for some unknown reason.
I didn't. I don't have you saved in my work phone.
Yeah, yeah, I'm right.
Kid absconded with my phone.
Yeah, but, but used to for some, when I would call people that didn't have me saved, it would show up as Christopher Bilbury. Cause that's what my name is through. I mean, that's, that's what it is through the phone company. However, when I called Kate last night, it showed up as.
I got surprised.
Yeah, do it. Show it. It came up as Lighthouse Studio. That is amazing. I don't even know why or how. And, and she doesn't have me saved in there like that.
No, she's not my contacts on the work phone because it's not a work contact.
Yeah, we're like, uh, real life deal.
We're real children now.
Who did that? How did that happen?
You tell me, man. I thought it was cool.
Yeah, I think it's awesome. That's great. All right. Yeah. Thanks. So, uh, yeah, she'll be up tomorrow. Brando will be here. Brandon Rudd will be here. Uh, we will have live people, uh, on the ground in, uh, different locations and be getting information for you. So, uh, we'll know that and we'll, we'll be, we'll be, uh, giving you everything. Caller ID or you are using a, what's a SIP phone? What are you talking about? Yeah. What are you talking about? Tim Dalton? Um, so that's, uh, that's that. Uh, again, I'll show it to you again. Hey, and listen, share this to everyone you know. Share this because my, I'm going to, I'm going to run the piss out of this all day tomorrow. I'm going to blast it, blast it out on, uh, on X and everywhere else, because I want people that's never even watched us, never heard of us to tune in and get a load of what we're going to do. We're going to, we're going to really rock it tomorrow. But a couple interesting, uh, interesting things planned up my sleeve. No, 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 it's not. It's, it's just my regular Verizon phone. That is through, that I, that I went in and got after my divorce, when I, when I got divorced. I, I went in, we had a plan together and I gave her the phone. I went in and got a new phone. Cause at the time I was a car salesman and I was like, screw it. I'm just going to get a new phone, start all over. And I did that and, um, no, I did. I, it's very strange. I, yeah, I,
Tim, you have way too much faith in Christopher's.
Yeah, I'm not doing any of that. I, I swear to you on a stack of bibles. Uh, and, and you know what I'm going to have to do? I'm going to have to call, I'm going to have to call my grandparents tomorrow. Uh, because I'm going to tell you, uh, and I'm going to take, I'll take a picture while I'm there. Because they're, they, when I call there, my number shows up on their TV and it doesn't show up the whole name. It always shows up as Christopher Bib. Bilb, uh, B I L B. And that's all it shows up. So now I'm going to have to call while I'm there and see if it shows up. Lighthouse or light, whatever. So interesting. I don't know. She just brought that to my attention yesterday and I thought that was pretty cool. Anyways, uh, getting on with things. Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, uh, it's over. I'm going to, matter of fact, I'm going to delete this and, uh, that's all she wrote. We've only got two more of those overlays left. This is the overlay for tomorrow during the day. And then this is one of the overlays for tomorrow night. Now we wait. I don't even know. I don't. Ah, is, is, who, who's out there is nervous? Is anybody nervous? Is anybody out there nervous? Yeah, bro. Am I nervous about tomorrow? Is there anybody that still has to vote? Is there anybody that needs to vote? Anybody that hasn't already voted? I want to know. Oh, it's shock proof dude. Haven't seen you in forever. What the hell? It's good to see that you're alive. Yeah, bro. Tim. Ah, yeah, the voting dude, the voting, 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 the voting. Everybody keeps talking about this and then you want me to tell you what happens? And this is what, this is what kills me. This is what kills me. It's like waiting on a biopsy result. Uh, yeah, some might say that. This is number one. Okay? Um, I vote of Southside Middle School. Um, voting tomorrow. Where's everybody vote? Where do you vote Tweety Bird? Uh, if you don't want to say, maybe, I mean, there's no one, anyone could notify, know who you guys are, but if you don't want to say it, I didn't understand. Um, that's amazing. I'm worried about what's going to happen with Arizona and their, uh, their recount. Um, I vote at Hamilton Township Volunteer Fire Department. And, um, talent. Okay. Um, Tweety Bird, I'm going to just ask you right here. No one knows who you are and we're not going to ouch. I'm not going to ouch you. Did you get my message when I said, uh, hey, you're emailing kind of a weird email? Just text me and I gave you my number. Like you don't have, and I, I got, I got to thinking like, oh, maybe she doesn't want to give me your number. And that's perfectly fine. I just want to tell you this. Number one. When you email, you email the TPS program, which is, is fine because we give that out for people to email. And I need to do a better job of checking that on a routine, probably daily basis. The problem is I don't. And the problem is I get so many freaking phone calls and text messages and emails, how it is. I sometimes forget the TPS. So it's both on my phone, but what happens is, and you know, I'm set up for KH Bilbury, which is my regular email. Oh, you didn't get it. Okay. Then here's the deal. Tweety Bird. Then I'm going to tell you right now, right here, right now, right here, right now. And that way you'll know and we'll know. Here's the thing, what you should do Tweety Bird instead, cause here's the deal. You email me some very interesting stuff. And I appreciate your input. Even though you're wackadoo on some of the stuff and we disagree and you probably think I'm crazy, far out there. I appreciate anytime anybody messages me, right, left, up, down. I don't give a shit. I like information and it's all good to get. So I appreciate any, any of the people that we watch and engage with, you know, I don't, I don't care. If people who hate me contact me, I don't, I don't care. Um, well, thank you Diane. Say, where have you been? I, I hope you're doing well. I knew that you had some stuff going on Diane. I hope you're going well. I hope things are going well for your family. You'll have to send me a private message. I've not talked to you in a long time. Kate's here. Diane's here. I am so happy to see. Where have you guys been? I've been seeing a couple of you people. That's crazy. That's nuts. Just people are popping. Now you're starting to make me feel like you guys are working with the FBI. We're getting ready to get raided. Something's weird. It's like, you know, when, when you're a drug dealer and then all of a sudden like the, you get that one sketchy guy that start, you know, it's not been around for a couple of months. Then all of a sudden he starts popping back up. You guys all pop up at once. Ah, ah, I know, I know those tricks. That's what we used to roll. Uh, Tweety Bird, here's the deal. I sent you an email a while back. You must not have got it. That said, I don't want to miss your stuff. And there have been times that you've emailed me that I haven't got it for like two weeks. And that's my fault, not yours. So what would be better than anything, if you are comfortable, is right there's my phone number, write it down. And like every other source or person out there or weirdo or friend or whatever, whatever you want to consider yourself. Text me. Text me your information rather than emailing me. And I'll put you in, when you text me, say, hey, this is Tweety Bird. I know who you are. I know your real name, but I won't ever use it. And I won't even put you in my phone as your real name. I'll put you in my phone as Tweety Bird. I've got people in, under all kinds of weird code names. That way no one ever knows if they steal my phone or whatever. I'll put you text and say, hey, this is Tweety Bird. I'll put you in as Tweety Bird. And then that way, when you have information, you can text it to me and I'll get it right away instead of two weeks later. That's probably the preferred method. Yeah, I know, I, I know, uh, I know, I know, I know Diane, that you've been, um, you've been, uh, out and about and I hope everything's going well and, uh, I, I'm glad to see you. Welcome back. Glad, glad to see you here. Um, I saw that pink hat and I was like, wait a minute, I know that person. Um, shock proof. They must be around Henry County. So, um, all right, here's the deal. We're not going to go on too long tonight because first of all, I have some work I need to do to get ready for tomorrow. Uh, tomorrow shows, I need to get some stuff, overlays ready and some things going. Uh, and also today's been a long day. Um, so what do you think about a lot of businesses around the country closing up, boarding up and the White House getting extra security? Yeah. Uh, look, that's, um, that's, uh, you know what I mean? Like, I get it. Um, it's smart. I mean, it's, it's probably, I think it's telling. There's my phone number. Um, now all of you people out there, don't just, don't like overload me. If you need me, get ahold of me, text me, whatever. Texting's the best way to get ahold of me. We can set up a phone call or whatever, like, it's, you would be amazed. One of these days I need to just record how many phone calls I get in a, like a 12 hour period. It would freak, it would really freak you out. There's my number. People keep, uh, keep record of it. Take it, take it, take it, take it, take it. 765-546-9796. Um, so Tennessee, um, Tennessee, where are you at? Tennessee honeypot. Tennessee, where are you at? Tennessee Honey Pot. Um. I think it's probably pretty smart. Number one. Number two, um, I think it might be like foreshadowing. Maybe it's interesting. You know, it depends on. Um, oh yeah, yeah. Uh, K Mama, that's great. Absolutely. You guys can do that. That's, that's, no, that's great. Um. GW, so you guys are both going to vote tomorrow. So let me ask you, is, is anybody voting? Here's what I want to know. Here's an interesting question. Is anybody voting? Making a weird vote tomorrow, like voting for someone that maybe three, four, five, six months ago, you thought that you wouldn't be voting for? Uh, that's a question that I would, I'm interested on any of you having. And number two. Is there anybody that is like? We will be voting split ticket. That's good. Yeah, that's good. Is there anybody that is, um, maybe not undecided? Obviously I, I don't know how, you know, I was listening to, who was I listening to? Maybe Glenn Beck. You know, I don't know how anybody could, could be going in tomorrow to vote and they'd be like, I'm, I don't know what I'm going to do here. Is there anyone? That is conflicted? Are you conflicted? Are there people out there? Are there people out there that? Are like, I don't know if I should do Trump or Kamala. Like I'm really confused. I just, I, I don't like this and I don't like this about him and I don't like this about her. I know I'm voting for rainwater, man. Yeah, yeah. So. Here's the number one thing I'm trying to, I'm trying to get people to understand. I fully believe. Okay. We'll go over that here in just one second. Uh, K Mama. Shockproof. Vote for yourself. Think about that. That is a really deep thought. When you go into the polls tomorrow. When you go into the polls tomorrow. Don't vote for the candidate on the left or don't vote for the candidate on the right. Don't vote for that Republican or that incumbent Democrat or that, that independent. Don't vote for any incumbents or don't vote for any new people. When you go in and vote tomorrow. When you vote for president, whatever vote you make. Make it a vote for yourself. Make it a vote for your family. When you vote for governor. Go in and vote for yourself. When you vote for commissioner or county council, vote for yourself. And I don't mean write yourself in on all that stuff. I mean, vote for the person who you're not going to agree with all of the time. Your Roger Overby's really voting for himself and I would, you smart ass. I would highly recommend any Delaware County citizen to vote for Roger Overby. I'm gonna be really honest. If I could tell all of Delaware County what to do and they would listen and they would at least somewhat do it. I would tell everyone to go in tomorrow. And bullet vote, that means only vote once. Vote. Vote bullet, I was just reading bullet, going in bullet proof, bullet vote, vote once. Just for Roger Overby for counsel. And leave. The other two blank. Don't vote for Jessica Piper. Don't vote for, um, book out. Don't vote for Eugene Whitehead. Don't vote for Chris Music. Go in and vote for Roger Overby. When you bullet vote. When you go in and you have three people on the ballot that you can vote for, and when you've got five people to choose from or six people to choose from, and you can vote for the top three and you only vote once, it's like giving him all three votes. It's actually like doing that more. Go in and vote for him. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you why. Because Roger Overby understands that his job, he, he's not a congressman. He's not the president. He's not out there deciding what's going on on the border wall. He, he's not trying to take away women's rights or gay rights or black rights or white rights or any of your, any, any rights. He is running to be a county councilman. And he's had experience as a council person in the past. He's had experience. He's worked in government. And he is probably the most level headed of anybody running. So. Go out and that is my big push in Delaware County. I believe Brand is gonna win. I, I think Brand's gonna win. I don't see that as being a problem. In Randolph County, go in and vote for Coy Applegate for Commissioner. John Bartlett, vote for John Bartlett for District 33. Um. Ha, you know Tweety Bird, that's interesting. Why did the guy from the video yesterday have to take off his belt? And it's because where he was going to early vote, he had to walk through security first. So there were two police officers there and part of their rules that the sheriff told them is people also have to take off their belts and watch to go through. So he took off, you know, his, he's like, it's a plastic belt. We don't know why he had to take it off. They didn't know. They were like, well, we don't know. Ask the sheriff. And they were real flip about it. So I'm trying to find out. I don't know yet. I didn't get an answer. It's so stupid. Absolutely stupid. Um. Yeah, I don't know. Um. And I, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta pick on, uh, hold on here. Okay. So Honey Pot says, do you know if you wear anything political or has a political people on it? You cannot vote. Yeah, you, you won't be able to go in. It's, it's considered engineering. So you could flip your shirt inside out or whatever. Um, number one rule. Don't go in wearing anything. Don't go in saying, what's my fir- first amendment right? It's my freedom of speech. You have your first amendment right, your freedom of speech to politic out in the real world. Keep on rocking in the free world as much as you want. When you're going in this area, you do not have the right to have that on. You're going in to vote. You don't need to be wearing this shit to go in and vote. You're going in to do the work you need to do. Go in and get it done. Don't make a scene over that. Take your shit off, go in and vote. That's what you gotta do. But as long as you're in there and you don't have anything on, do not let them send you away. Don't get pissy. Just stand up for yourself. If you get someone sending you away, call your clerk's office, call the secretary of state's office, call me on the cell phone, do something, we'll figure it out. You gotta get it figured out. Do not go tomorrow to vote and then not vote because they're telling you no. You're, you're, you know, they cannot turn you away. They should not turn you away. We will not let them turn you away. We will make sure that you're good to go. So just, just be mindful of that. I, I gotta talk about this thing that Tweety Bird said. About. Yes, and women don't vote for whoever your husband tells you to vote for. What in the 1950s are we talking about there? I would surely to God hope, I, I saw what Kate rode, Kate wrote, I saw what Kate wrote. And I feel like most people would do the same thing. You know, I know like my grandma, my grandpa, they'll, they've been married for 68 years. Last, last Thursday, last Tuesday, Tuesday or Thursday, last week was their 68th wedding anniversary. They've been together since they, they met each other like for real. Like when they were like 13 and 14, the, these people have been together since they've been 13 or 14. And they're both like 84, 86 and 84 now. Like that's really crazy to me. That is really insane. Anyways, there is no way in hell my grandma would allow my grandpa to tell her who to vote for or vice versa. Now they would ask each other and they'd be friendly, but if my grandmother wanted to vote for John Doe and my grandpa's like, no, you're gonna vote for David Doe. She'd say, kiss mine, cause I ain't doing it. And so I'm just telling you. Don't let anybody tell you. You can also, don't, don't be afraid. It's double edged sword. Don't let anyone tell you how to vote. Don't let anyone force you into doing something that you don't want to do. At the same time. Don't be afraid to ask for help. It's perfectly fine to ask for help if you need. It's also perfectly fine to leave a ballot blank. It's also perfectly fine. If you really trust someone and you don't, my, my, my middle brother, my, the brother, not my, well, yeah, no, no. My, my middle brother is the brother close to me in Italy. My youngest brother called me or texted me and said that him and his wife were going to vote tomorrow. And they wanted to know on some of the races, who I felt they should vote for. And I'll call and tell him, you know, I'll tell him to vote rainwater and he'll go in and vote rainwater and he won't know anything about him. He's 21 years old, 22, something like that, 23, somewhere in there. He's just starting to get to the point where he's starting to be a real person. He hasn't known, he's not followed this stuff, but he's always voted and he tries to get as up to date with what's going on as possible. But at the end of the day, he, if he can't, he'll just ask. And you know, if you trust somebody that well, that's, that's fair too. So. You know, it's your vote. It's your ballgame. Do as you see fit. I want everybody to know. I want everyone to know also, I've been, I've been trying to tell my grandparents this. I have been posting. I mean, I posted on the thing for tomorrow. Tomorrow's. Let me. Tomorrow's, uh. Special broadcast. Let me see it. Uh, the description says this. Voting in 2024, voting in the 2024 general election ended in the great state of Indiana at 6:00 PM Eastern today, Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. And now we wait. Wait and watch. Wait and watch and hope. Wait and watch and hope and pray. Wait and watch and hope and pray and discuss. Join hosts Christopher H. Bilbury, Brandon Rudd, producer Kate and others who may just pop around for a visit on what is most certainly a historic night in American history. And I believe that. I believe that. Different than the 2000 vote, different than the, the 1990 vote, different than, than 1968, different than 1960. Even these historic times in, in United States history. I truly believe tomorrow will be a historic day, no matter what happens. And the fallout from that and everything that occurs from basically tomorrow at 6:00 AM forward will be history. And there is a lot writing on this and there's a lot of, uh, apprehension. And there's a lot of fear and there's a lot of anger and there's a lot of sadness and there's a lot of depression and there's a lot of anxiety. But at the same time, there's also a lot of hope and there's a lot of joy. And there's a lot of happiness and there's a lot of, you know, thoughts about what could be. And it's like these worlds are both living in, in some people, in the brains of this, in some people are, it's like bipolar. They're up and they're down and they're up and they're down. And I get it and I understand and it is very. It's, that's a fact. But. For every bit as serious as tomorrow is, for, for every bit as very possibly life altering. The results of tomorrow will be. Remember number one, to take a deep breath because whatever happens tomorrow night. You know, God willing, the sun will rise on Wednesday morning. And maybe you'll still be hungover and happy. Maybe you'll have cried yourself to sleep. I think that those responses to both sides are both ignorant. Do not let yourself get so consumed by this that it becomes your total identity and you can't escape or see anything outside of this bubble that you've created. Because no matter what happens tomorrow night and into Wednesday or Thursday or whatever goes on. You're still going to get up and, and you're gonna go to work and things are going to happen and life is still going to go on. Now, do I think that there can be scary things in our future? Absolutely. I'm a student of the Bible. I'm aware that we have scary things on the horizon. I absolutely am preparing for scary things on the. I absolutely am preparing for scary things on the horizon. But I also, being a student of the Bible, am prepared for hope and I understand that there's happiness and joy on the horizon too. And I just want to let everyone know that it's, it's fine if you, like, like Tweety Bird says, I'm preparing for the worst. I just want everybody to not lose their collective minds and, and just remember that we're gonna wake up, no matter what goes on next Monday, and life is still going to be happening here. And there are going to be things that go on and there, you know, maybe it'll be a new normal that we've gotta get used to and, and I don't know. It just all comes down to what you or humans are willing to take. If someone feels it's so bad that they're not willing to take it, well, then we'll have to wait and see what happens. But I, I don't know that a win or a loss, either way, doesn't have to mean, I feel like so many people are going into this and saying, well, however it turns out, we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't. It's gonna be civil war if Trump wins and it's gonna be civil war if Trump loses. You notice what's funny is when people say that, they don't mention anything about Kamala winning. They only talk about Trump winning or Trump losing. I always think that's interesting. It's like she's not even considered. It's either Trump is going to win or Trump is going to lose. I just, I just want people to realize that I've, I'm afraid that people are pushing themselves in almost to a self fulfilling prophecy of insanity. And it doesn't have to be that way. We don't have to push ourselves into any kind of self fulfilling prophecy. We can, we can back her down and be like, okay, you know, now what? It's all, it's always okay. My, my dad, not my dad, excuse me, my uncle always had, used to say something. He, he was a person that loved to drive fast, listen to loud music and look at pretty girls. And he was very much a, a kid of the late 60s, early 70s. And he would, as a lot of kids do, not saying it's good, but he would go get with his friends and get in the car and go get a case of beer and drive around out in the country and drink and throw beer bottles and beer cans at signs and do dumb shit and drive cars way too fast and do all of that stuff. And that's something that he just loved. He was a car nut. And he's been in so many accidents and crashes and this and that. And, you know, he's been in high speed pursuits and gotten out of them and all kinds of chaos and craziness. And I always remember him telling me that when you're getting into an accident, people tend to do one, uh, like two things. They, they keep their foot on the accelerator and they're keep gunning it, which is making the problem worse, or they immediately take their foot off the accelerator and cram on the brakes, which sometimes can be helpful, but a lot of times can also make the problem even worse. He, he always told me from a very young age, the very first thing when shit hits the fan that you need to do is take a second to breathe and look around and, and take stock of what's happening. You don't need to continue pedal to the metal, all the way to the floor, you know, keep gunning that son of a bitch. But you don't necessarily want to just take your foot right off the accelerator and cram it on the brakes, cause that can be bad too. You might need to just take your foot off the gas and look around and observe what's happening for a moment. And I think that that to me has a lot of, a lot of truth to what's happening, what will be happening tomorrow. Stumble foot. Ride the wave, ride the wave. Absolutely. So, I tried that the first four years. So, so what's your solution? What, so what happens? Let me ask you this, and you don't have to answer this Tweety Bird if you don't want, because I understand this might be too personal. And so, so you don't have to answer this. But, but I wanna know, you personally, unless you don't wanna say this, and if you don't, that's perfectly fine. But you personally, what was the worst thing that happened to you personally? During Trump's first four years? What, what happened? Did some, did something happen to you? I, I'm interested in that. And I mean, I guess the flip side is, you know, I understand that we all can say like, you know, well, the economy's been so bad and look at the border under, you know, under Biden and Kamala. But I guess to the, to the other people, you know, what has anyone, you know, name me what has happened to you speci-, there are people out there that can do that. There, you know, there are someone out there, God forbid, who, you know, look at, uh, what's, what was her name? Lincoln Riley, who, you know, her family's like, well, you know, my daughter was taken from us. And I directly attribute that to the Biden administration because of X, Y, and Z. And that would be a specific, that, to me, that would be a legitimate answer. The first time he turned me off was when Trump made fun of the journalist with cerebral palsy. Okay, okay, okay. All right, okay. So, and that is a fair, that is a fair statement for you to make. And that is a fair thing for you to not like. And I get it 100%. However, the question is, can you, I mean, so is that's the worst thing that happened to you under, under Trump's reign, under the first four years while he was in office? The, while he was in office, the first four years, the worst thing that's happened to you was that he made fun of a journalist with cerebral palsy? Because, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying, well, I'll, I'll wait to see what your response is. Truck drivers were making six a mile under Biden too. Truckers don't get discussed much, but so many companies are going to go under if this keeps up. Space cat, that's a, that's a, that's an answer. You know, like, like for example, let, let me, let me try, let me try this. Let me explain this to you. So, my grandma, my grandpa, I talk about him on, on here all the time. My grandmother's family is all hardcore, has always been Republicans. Okay? My grandpa's family is hardcore Democrat. And what's funny is way, 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 way back when, they flip flopped. My grandpa's family was actually Republican. And my grandma's family was like Democrat. And there was two specific things that happened that changed their outlooks. My grandmother's oldest brother, his name was David Marvin. He was, uh, killed in World War II. And they, the family blames that 1,000% her mother. And her siblings blamed that on FDR. They said that he, he only got, he was shorted training, basic training by two weeks because they needed them so fast. They were, they were giving them like a quicker run through and sent off. And he got killed. And they, that family that had once been supporters of FDR, not anymore. She was, my grandma's mother was a hard and old lady. We called her little grandma because she was tiny. We would all go over to her house when I was a little kid, I remember, and we'd line up sitting on this great big long couch, you know, the kind that they would, used to call it like the Davenport, you know, that thing. It's like two miles long. We'd all sit, sit on this couch and one by one, we would go sit next to her and on this little stool she had. And she would hold her hand and she would pat it. And you would whisper to her and she would whisper to you, very like godfather like, very, very strange. But this incident occurred and because her son was killed, she blamed that on FDR. And they were then from that point forward Republican. And my grandmother, to this day, is Republican. My grandfather's family had money, they were rich and things were going good. He had some stores and things like that. And then the Great Depression hit and he lost it all. And he, his family was like destitute. They were in really bad shape. And here FDR came in, swinging with the, with the new, the, the, uh, New Deal. And boom bang pow. My grandma, my grandfather's dad loved FDR and he vowed to never vote Republican again. And so it's funny to me that you've got two people that are married whose families grew up a mile from each other in Tennessee. Their families, for different reasons, moved to Muncie and live within a couple miles of each other in Muncie. And they meet when they were 13, 14 years old, get married and been together all this time. And their families are both two different sides of the political spectrum for two very different, very real reasons, all from the same man. A very strange story. You say Trump's handling of COVID hurt us all. I, I can't say, I mean, it didn't hurt me. And you, you have to understand this. Yeah, I don't, I don't think you watched any of the bastards when we, when we did the bastards of politics. I was not a Trump fan. I have not been a Trump fan. I was not a Trump fan in 2016. I was interested in the show that was Trump. But I, I didn't like the gaffes. I didn't like the fact that he would, he, all the self induced injury that he would cause himself. I just thought like, that seemed like a bit of impulse control issues to me. No, I, I gotta be honest, it, it didn't. I've, I've had COVID twice. My grandparents have both had COVID twice. Other family members have had it at least once. I don't know. I just want people to realize that, just don't shut off, don't shut off. Whatever happens tomorrow, we have to be able to talk it through and we have to be able to, to work things out. And we will. We will work through it. Uh, hey, I'm gonna get ready to roll, but before we leave really quickly, I do have to say this. I just wanna talk just briefly about, uh, before we get there, I wanna talk briefly about the, uh, about, about the council meeting. The reason I like Trump now, what, what the thing, that's a good question. What made me like Trump? Was, so my grandmother does not like him. My grandmother doesn't, is not a Trump supporter, does not, is not a fan of Trump. And her, her biggest issue with him is not what he says about women, not all of the allegations, not, you know, any of the mean tweets and things like that. What my grandmother does not like about him is the weird little comments that either he or other people have been made around him, uh, conflating him with, uh, like a religious figure. You know, the, the time that he said something to the effect of like, I could, I could be the second coming. The moment my grandma heard that, she was done. He could have said or done anything else and he would have, he lost her, he lost her with that. And, you know, I get it. I understand where she's coming from. I, you know, stupid. That's, Trump's always been Trump's downfall is, for all of people, people wanna say he's dumb and he's not dumb. He just does dumb things. Because he's not the polished politician. He wants to be liked. He wants to be the entertainer. And he's balancing that with the fact that he's, you know, now this, he, he was a president of the United States for God's sake. And so he's just, he's trying to mesh this all into one thing. You know, it was like Joe Rogan said that Trump was funny. Trump, Trump is, Trump has, Trump has comic timing. And he's not a politician. He's, Trump is Trump. Speaking of Joe Rogan, it just came out tonight. I, I posted about this on Twitter right as it happened. Joe Rogan officially came out and endorsed Trump this evening. The great and powerful Elon Musk. It, uh, if it wasn't for him, we'd be fucked. He makes what I think is the most compelling case for Trump, you'll hear. And I agree with him every step of the way. For the record, yes, that's an endorsement of Trump. Enjoy the podcast. I think that's, uh, I think that's pretty big. That's pretty big because, uh, he said he was not going to endorse anyone. And then he did the podcast. And then I almost think what was bigger than Trump doing the podcast was the fact that Trump did the podcast, then Kamala's like, no, you're gonna have to come to me, blah, 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 blah. And it was really difficult. And then they were like, nope, we're not gonna do it. And then all of a sudden JD Vance is like, yep, I can do it. You know, and I think that that, that team together pushed Rogan into a place where he felt comfortable enough to give the endorsement. So, that's interesting. Um, I, I started liking Trump when I realized that, I come to the realization that throughout the Bible, God used a lot of people that weren't specific Christians, specifically Christians or, or weren't good people. Uh, you know, he, he often would use Or, or weren't good people. Uh, you know, he, he often would use. The worst of the worst in some cases to advance the cause to further, further appoint or to make. To make something occur to, you know, to, to further advance the message in the Bible. And I realized that, you know, I don't have to, I'm not voting Trump to be my preacher. I'm not looking at Trump to be my moral guidance. I'm not looking at Trump to be a spiritual leader. I'm not looking at him to be, I'm, I, I want. Him. To work to make. America the best it can be. I'm not gonna say make America great again. I think, I think people say that and then immediately it gets into the race. Whoa, what do you mean? You mean it's not good now because duh, 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 duh? I'm just, I want America to be better than it is today. That's, look, I'm not trying to be nuts and be like, I want her to. I just want America to be better tomorrow than it was today. And I want it to be better on Wednesday than it was on Tuesday. And better on Thursday than it was on Wednesday. And I know that we're gonna have stumbles and we're gonna have falls and things are gonna happen. But overall, I truly believe out of listening to both sides of this. And there is no one alive that can say that I do not listen to both sides, that I have not spent. Since they've been doing this, listening to them, listening to, to CNN, listening to, um, uh. Keith Olbermann, listening to Rachel Maddow, listening to the people on The View, reading, reading from The Washington Post. Reading, reading things coming out on The Daily Wire, watching Fox News, watching, you know, looking at what's going on on Twitter. And looking at all of the information, as much information as I could possibly get. Sometimes so much information, I just can't even consume it all at the same time. And after looking at all of that, I truly believe that Trump can put us in a better situation to be better off tomorrow. Than we were today. Now there's gonna be bumps and that's just true. There's gonna be a lot of things that he says and does. That I don't like, but it comes back to the whole thing I was saying about Brawn and rainwater. Right now, I like exactly 3% of Indiana government. I, I don't like a damn thing about Indiana government. It's just, it's horrible. And so whoever can give me more than the 3% I'm getting, well, great. I can Jennifer McCormick give me more than 3%? I don't know. I know that there's some things I'm concerned about her with. She was unwilling to talk to me. I have no idea what she stands for, where, where she's at, other than the campaigning. I don't want to hear five minute campaigning. I want to be able to sit down and talk to you like a human being, face to face. Or phone, ear, ear to mouth. I want to be able to hear from you. So I believe that Jennifer McCormick is like a. You know, even with, with Holcomb. It's Holcomb McCormick. It's about a horse of peace. All right. Brawn. Brawn, I don't like Brawn at all. I, 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 I get weird feelings with Brawn and I do not believe that Brawn can get us there. I like almost nothing about Brawn. So he's, he's no, I look at rainwater and there are things that I absolutely disagree with. There are things that I don't like, but there are far more superior things with rainwater. And I feel like with rainwater, I get more, lots more than what I got with Holcomb. Or Brawn or McCormick. So. Rainwater's my choice there. Same thing with, with county council. Same thing with Madison County Council. People's like, well, you're, you say you're a conservative, but you're, you're, you're saying that you'd, you'd vote for Rebecca Croomes. She's a Democrat. And let me tell you, there's a lot of things that Rebecca Croomes and I probably disagree with on national politics. Jeff, Jeff Robinson got up and spoke tonight. There is a lot of stuff that Jeff Robinson and I disagree on. If Jeff Robinson came around and was running for Indiana State Representative or was running for Senator. I would not agree with him. I would, I would disagree with him and we wouldn't, we would not be on the same team, same eye to eye. But as a city councillor, he, he had enough of what I needed that I could count on. And I went with him and I took, I took a chance and it paid off. You know? And look, 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 I might want Trump and Trump might win and I might realize, uh-oh, that was a screw up. But I guarantee you that same damn thing can happen with Kamala. It's just a. We've got a, you've got to pick who you believe can get you the most of what you want. You're not, you're not picking. Your savior. You're not picking your, your father, your husband, your wife, you know, your, your partner. You're picking the person who you believe can give you enough. Or more than what the other person or people can give you. And that's where I'm at. So, um, real quick before we end, Muncie City Council. There's just so much going on folks. It was a shit show. You know, here's, here's a bottom line. I, I want to share this with, this came out today. It's official. What I've been saying since Thursday, 12 hours after the council meeting is. Let's see. In a significant development, the following recent city council decision to defund his position, former. In a significant development, following the recent city council decision to defund his position. Former Deputy Mayor Richard Ivy has accepted the position of HR Director. With the Muncie Sanitary District. Boom bang pow. The development comes in the wake of the council's controversial decision to eliminate funding for the deputy mayor's position, along with the deputy controller and director of communications. And various other personnel cuts citing budgetary constraints. Mr. Ivy, who served as deputy mayor for nearly four years, has been instrumental in various initiatives, including the Muncie Industrial Revolving Loan Fund, the Gainbridge Field Project. And serving as president of the Muncie Community Development Corporation. His dedication to improving. City operations and fostering community engagement has earned him respect from both constituents and colleagues. Alike, I guess. I don't know. I am excited to join the Muncie Sanitary District and contribute to our community in a new capacity while still being part of the city of Muncie team, says Ivy. Richard's Ivy's hiring by the Muncie Sanitary District comes at a critical time. And while he will be certainly be missed as deputy mayor, I am thrilled that he will continue to be an asset to the city of Muncie and Muncie Sanitary District, says Mayor Dan Ridenhour. And then that was obviously by the Communications Director Amber Green. So there it is. And you see a significant development goes to HR. Of course, I've been saying that since 12 hours after the vote. It pisses them off. I heard they were all trying to figure out who told me that and how, how I came up with it that early. Everyone's just shocked because they're, they're saying that Richard didn't even know at that point. I'm like bullshit. Okay, council's controversial. Council's controversial decision. So I've been thinking that this meeting was gonna be rough. And let me tell you, it was, but it was rough for a completely. Different reason. I cannot believe that we are 11 months into this year and the council is still as backwards as what it is. The citizens stood up tonight and said, you know, before I, I did anything on these committees. I read Robert's Rules of Order and I would highly suggest you do that. Man, I hope they read it. I hope they get book on tape. I hope they watch the play version of it. And I hope they catch Robert's Rules for Order on Netflix. They need to watch it and watch it and listen and gain and learn. Because they are so screwed up, man. It is not even funny. So there was a lot that happened in the meeting. There's a lot worth discussing. But honestly, I think it, a lot of it comes down to the fact that. It's an embarrassment to see how these people behave. And. I, I don't know. You can go and watch the entire meeting on our page. Uh, it, it was just recorded a few hours ago. It was complete insanity. And, uh. I don't know. I, I just, I'm really at a loss of words for it. So watch that. And then folks, remember, be here throughout the day tomorrow, 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 tomorrow. Be sure to be here. Be sure to get out and vote. Okay? It's very, very important. And then after all of this, remember, tune in tomorrow. You can scan it right here. Scan it, damn it. All right. You can scan it. You can be here tomorrow, the 2024 General Election Results Show. At 7:00 PM Eastern. All right. We're gonna see and hear from a lot of people. One of the people I hope that we don't hear from is this toolbag here. Here's a State Representative JD Prescott at a Micah Beckwith event tonight. And, uh, you know, I'll be honest, it doesn't look like he's sitting here watching. Uh, Beckwith give a speech. It looks like he's some kind of washed up junkie. At, uh, you know, in the NA meeting waiting to speak. He looks so rough here. So crazy. I don't know. There's that. Kamala says, I missed it earlier. We are, are we allowed to record while we vote? Whistle while you work, mama. Listen, I'm gonna say this and I want people to listen to me because they get way confused on this. You are permitted to record your ballot, your machine. You can do the whole nine yards. You can take pictures of what you do. You can, you can take straight recording. Whatever you want to do of you and your ballot. Don't be recording other people's stuff and, and getting wonky with it. So keep that in mind. And that's, as long as you do that. You're good to go. Just keep it on you and your ballot and you're ready to rock and roll. Um. I'm starting to see the Democrats taking control of the council. Absolutely. Do Trump's hands bother you when he grabs them by? Uh, I want to talk about that too. That's something real quick that everybody always talks about when he said that. That, look, that's not a Trump thing, man. That's a celebrity thing. And I don't, I didn't like him saying that, but it, it, look. So is everybody, everybody's weirded out by Trump saying that, but everybody's okay with the whole. Uh, music band Led Zeppelin groupies, Aerosmith groupies, you know, all, all of that stuff. Everyone's okay with that. But they don't like the fact that for a period in time in the 1980s and 1990s. There were people that found Trump attractive. And women wanted to be around him and near him and, and a lot of it had nothing to do with his looks or his personality. But it had to do with his money. That's just a fact of life, man. That's just something that, that happened. And that wasn't Trump being anything other than saying like, look, you know, because of who I am and because of my status, I'm able to do things. That, you know, I don't know. I, again, not something I would have done, not something I would have said. Well, listen, you know, we, we've all been younger men, those of us that are men. And, you know, you do and you say things, but. You know, I guess it's how many people are, are being recorded and how many of us are running for president? So I don't know. Bill was wrong too. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Oh, Chief Muncie, man, you gotta go back and watch. Or I, I need to talk to you about the, I need to talk to you about the council meeting tonight. Uh, are you? If you're gonna be up, I, I need to talk to you about the council meeting tonight. If, if you're up for it, let me know. Uh, give me a, give me a text, Chief Muncie, if you're gonna be up or if you're going to bed or whatever. Okay, I will. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that's gonna do it for us. Sorry for so late tonight. But it was what it was. Council meeting ran over. It was a complete shit show. Get to bed, get rested, get out and vote if you have not voted. Tomorrow's gonna be long. It's gonna be long, long, long. It's gonna be long voting lines. Have patience. If you go there to vote, like make sure, don't go on your lunch hour and, and think, oh, I, I need to be in and out in 15 minutes. That ain't gonna cut it. Go when you've got time to go and get the shit done. Don't go and leave and think you're gonna. That, that's not gonna work. You're gonna need to go. You're gonna need to commit and you're just gonna need to do it. All right? You guys, listen, tomorrow is, this is gonna be the big, 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 big thing. I'm pushing this because this is very, very big. See right there. Vote over me. That's very important. Tune in right here tomorrow, right here tomorrow. The, the link is already up. It's the bitly link, link. B I T dot L Y forward slash G E R, General Election Results Show. 2024. It's already on YouTube. Uh, it, it's on Twitter. At, in, at midnight, it will be on rumble, so it'll be everywhere. Or simply go to the QR code. Hit that up. We will be there at 7:00 PM tomorrow. And we will be on and we will be your live up to the minute coverage for all things local, state and national. All right, ladies and gentlemen, you have a wonderful rest of your evening. God bless each and every one of you and we will see you tomorrow. Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. The election day. Good Lord, it's here. Can you believe it? All right. Good night. Goodbye. All right, good night. Goodbye.